Six oh one, follow the median order. You can take roll G. Number two, approval of the consent agenda. A and D. It's all yours. If you'll look on first page with all the general fund purchase orders. Should have them all listed out on there. Nothing really out of the ordinary monthly. We've got several smaller purchase orders. If you look down there to the bottom, number six, for number six twenty-eight, that's ARP, special ed fund, that was additional funding that was allocated to us through that American Rescue Plan specifically for special education. So those purchases there for various things, but those go directly to our special education programs. Another one, thirty-five hundred dollars, purchase order one thirty-eight for that Baker Science Insurance Company. That is the graphics for the white activity bus. Change that over. So that was the expense for that. Studios supplies, we really didn't have any, any really large expenses. Just a lot of little things, this amount, but not a lot, it's out of the ordinary. So our utility costs have remained a little bit higher just from electricity and natural gas bill. And of course, our fuel bill is always a little higher this time of year with all the different activities and all the directions that we're going. Added cost, the fuel has gone up, it is a little bit higher. Are there any questions over any of those purchases? Nothing on that page. Go to the building fund. We did have one larger expense for seven thousand eighty-five dollars. That is the remainder of the rock for over there at the bus barn that we've got later around there. We had brought in a couple loads before spring break. So this is, this is the expense, finished that out. So I think we're in that, I'm calling it the bus barn parking lot, for about seventy-eight hundred dollars. County came in and did all the hauling, leveled it, packed it. I think it'll hold up pretty good and for what, we're gonna use it or need that. Anyway, I've been really pleased with the way that that turned out over there. Backs for the vent, we did have to replace the hood vents in the back room and we had to actually go in there, APS Fire Company, we had to update the suppression system in that kitchen. It wasn't up to code, so we had to, we had to get that fixed.
Pretty new, wasn't it?
Not well, the hood vents, I think that were there, that were put in, I don't think that they were that old, but it didn't meet code. There was no, because of the type of range that they're in there, there was no suppression system directly over that. So that was something that we kind of got by with last year, but it needed to be taken care of this year. So we've got that fixed. Our marshal, I believe, was gonna be out here next week to hopefully approve and sign off on that project. So the two hood vents that we had to put in there just worked better with the system at APS. Nothing really out of the ordinary there in the building fund with any of those, those other expenses there, just supplies and things like that. Child nutrition, the only purchase order there is number three, it has to do decent food services. If there's no questions over any of those, we can move on to the activity fund report. I don't know if Kendra's got anything that specifically that needed to be noted. And I did talk a little bit, just to kind of see, Lex, this time of year gets hit pretty hard. Spring sports don't bring in just a whole lot of revenue. And so we were kind of in that point of time where we're gonna watch that really closely and make sure that we keep it within a good amount that we have to carry over to get next year started with activities. But right now, we're in pretty good shape there. Treasury report, handful, do you have anything you'd wanna call in on? I've spent some time today going through and looking, kind of trying to hit a place where we can attempt to get an idea of where our carryover may be at the end of the year, barring any unforeseen emergencies or major expenses. And then if our federal claims can come in on time with what we still have out there and available to collect, things stay up. Right now, I think it's pretty safe to say, I think that our carryover is gonna be a little over five hundred thousand. So much better shape than we were last year at this time. And that's not an exact figure, but I think right now, that's a pretty safe figure to move forward with. So a lot of that is due to use of our federal funds and gross production has been up quite a bit more than it was last year this time. So in the short term, that's good. There are still gonna be some things that we need to keep an eye on down the road. So, you know, another year like that, and I think we'll be getting really close to where we want to be. We'll have to continue to kind of keep an eye on some things. And that would be in the general fund, building fund, you know, I'd like to see it a little bit more. We are paying some salaries out of that this year. And so, you know, that's eating up a little bit more, but right now, it currently stands at a hundred and eighty-four thousand. I think we'll have a pretty healthy carryover compared to the last couple of years, especially last year we did in our child nutrition account. It's looking healthy and there'll be some things there that we need to keep an eye on because once the free introduce, if that goes away in June and we have to start charging for meals again, you know, there's always a chance there that everybody pays on time. And we need to make sure that we've got a cushion to sort some of those costs when the time comes. Any questions?
Is that everything you got?
That's everything on the consent agenda, I think.
All right. Any questions on all of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Anyone's made a motion, I'll send it. Judy?
Littlefield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Why?
Yes.
Number three, principals reports.
Baker's Farm. Okay, sure. Since our last board meeting, we have parent teacher conferences. We had a really good turnout for our spring parent teacher conferences. Our after school program is still going really well. We're up to forty-six students and we are excited. Northwest Family Services is going to start partnering with us where they come over once every two weeks to kind of do some social emotional lessons. So we're excited to have that as part of the after school program. We kicked off our first track meet on March twenty-third. We're still, when you think of track season, a lot of Wednesday track meets coming up. On March twenty-fifth, we had our Sequoia Book Party. Mrs. Kedmore does a really good, great job motivating students to read the Sequoia books and having them vote on if they've read three of them. So we had thirty-three students who made the Sequoia Book Party. This past Saturday, April second, was a big day for our school. Mrs. Ware took twenty-two students to the Sealed Music Festival. All of our ensembles and solos received superior ratings. And we also had three soloists, Natalie Eckhart, Kaylee Eckhart, and Brenner Means, and also our girls' ensembles that received a one plus, which is the highest rating that you can get. So we are, we continue to be appreciative of Mrs. Ware and everything that she pours into our kids because she spends a lot of time coming to get those kids ready. She was coming extra, so we really appreciate that and they were, their hard work paid off. Also, our elementary academic team competed at state on Saturday at Dale. They lost the first round, won the second round, and then they lost to Drummond by three questions in the third round. And Drummond ended up taking second state, so we were really close and really proud of those kiddos. Jordan Albierez, Garrett Ketterman, Jack Barker, Lucas Stein, Brenner Means, Marley Cumanal, and Katia Roberts were those who competed at state. So a lot of good things going on and we're getting ready to Garrett for state testing, which will start April twentieth for third and fourth grade, and then just kind of work our way through that. So that's it for me.
If you mentioned it, sorry, when I stepped out. That's just one. How many students are we up to in our after school program?
Forty-six.
And we started with around twenty, twenty-five hundred, something like that first week. So it's growing and that's what we wanted to see. I told Mr. Pruitt that I would do this, he didn't have his baseball game, so. The Chiefs, the lead Chiefs basketball teams were awarded the OSA Academic Achievement Award, and that goes to teams that have a three point two five or above. SCCLA, they had their state convention last week, week before. Was it track all days?
It was the week before. Yeah.
Week before, okay. And on the back there is a patch of list, they had several, they got to walk across stage down there that were state champions in their events. And so I think that's worth noting, the state champions, Carson Shawn Walker, career investigation level two, Kenley Patterson, career investigation level one, Tessa Littlefield, children's literature level one, Hope Jordan, say yes, FCS education level two, Lake Lion, high individual from the meet identification, level three. And then state runners up were Riley Hensley and career investigation level three, and then Brant Fells, Gracie Leslie, Lake Lion, Aiden Sandborn. Their team was state runner up in meet identification at level three. And so Carson, Riley, Hope, and Kenley will have the opportunity to compete for a national championship in San Diego this summer. Abby Duffy, Hall Walkerman, Lexie Williams, and Rayland Lee served at the state convention as building delegates. Kenley Patterson, Abby, Addie, Pickerstaff, Grace Jackson, and Tessa Littlefield served and the Courtesy Corps members down there. So they had a really good showing at the state convention with their SCCLA program, so a lot of success there. Speech and debate, did well in regional speech contest at college. The team, they were regional runner up. There's several listed there that will be going on to state in different events. And I believe that it's going, some is going to be virtual and some will be in person in Norman at OU. The February student of the month, this is something that I'm sure for it has started. And we're a little behind on, on the announcements, just catching up with everything that's going on. The February student of the month, in junior high, Alec Tidwell and Kenley Patterson were selected as students of the month. And in high school, Damian Ramirez and Maya Grant were selected as student of the month. So congratulations to those four. Baseball, slow pitch, track, everything's in full swing. We will be hosting regional track meet again here on April thirtieth. I'm not sure how many schools will be here, but it will be class A and two A. So there will be several in town. We held our first track meet last week, kind of a smaller meet, but it was, turned out to be a nice day even after it started to snow that morning, it was squishing a little bit, but it turned out to be a good day. Junior high will be hosting a book fair, April eighteenth through the twenty-third. They will start testing in the high school tomorrow and junior high will start testing on April twentieth. They had a great turnout, lots of kids taking ECT last month. And as of right now, we have over thirty students that will be interested and most likely will be attending Northwest next year. So that's, I think that's the most we've had participating amount, so lots of good things going on, lots of successes and very good.
Real quick, what's the date on the regional?
Regional is Saturday, April thirtieth.
Thank you, Bryson. Number four, presentation of the twenty twenty-one financial audit conducted by Pat Carroll and Chaz Carroll, PA. Cheers, guys.
Uh huh. You're up. I'll do this quickly, I gotta get a beer drinking a little bit.
All right.
For a long. Bottom pocket, I need you all to sign this.
Okay.
So it can be sent in to show that I was here. And I've got two more sheets for you and the superintendent to sign. I'll keep one and you take one. It lists out what we do and what you do and what's been involved for us to get to this point. I can introduce Jay States. Jay's been with us for about nine years now, he's an associate there. And since he's been there and he's been doing things, I thought I'd, you'd come around, you could see who some of the new faces are. Since I've been doing it fifty-two years, somebody else could want to have a new face.
I thought we were in trouble when you brought a new face.
Hold on a minute. Now your suit's not dark enough.
Right. Get black tie.
Get a parka and a lawn porter.
This is the, out for the two thousand, twenty twenty-one fiscal year, there are two opinion letters on there, the first one's on three, four, five, and six. The state of Oklahoma is considered being unqualified opinion. It does talk about being adverse or qualified opinion, but it's because we are not on generally accepted accounting principles, we're on a modified cash basis. Generally accepted accounting principle says you're on an accrual basis accounting, which means you're gonna show some of the revenues that you plan to collect, but you haven't collected, but you aren't gonna show all the expenditures that you as a boy have approved. On a modified cash, you only show what you've actually collected, but you show all the expenditures that you've approved to pay, even though we don't have those goods or services in yet. So it's a very conservative basis of accounting and that's what you want. It's not your money, you want it as conservative as possible. There are three major financial statements. There's exhibit A, B, and C, right after that first letter. Exhibit A is a balance sheet, it shows the different fund types, governmental fund types, fiduciary fund, and the last two columns are informational, it's an account group for general long-term debt. Then the last one shows everything adds across. But it shows the assets on hand for the different funds. Consumer special revenue shows we have an investment of fifty-one thousand dollars. I'll get into that in just a little bit. Liabilities, and it shows what we still had outstanding, either payable, a warrant payable, that's one of these issues, but has not gone through the bank yet, or our reserves, these are items that we had set up to pay, but we hadn't received the goods or services, but has to remain in that year where you approved it, they can't be moved forward. The fund balances then are broken into restricted or unassigned. You can see that we have that service capital project, building programs, and child nutrition, and then if you had a co-op fund, there would be monies there. But you notice we have a negative in our debt service and we have a negative in our general fund. These are not new items to you, you knew we had these last year when we ended the year. But the fifty-one thousand there is what it's showing up as an investment in the building fund. We can't really pick up additional dollars for that sinking fund because it's just delayed money that's not been in there due to our adware dollars that haven't been collected. So it shows an investment in the building fund to pay for that sinking fund debt we had to pay for that. We could not, not pay for it. It ends up being really bad at the school and the state if we do not pay those items. It had to be paid. We showed that as an investment in the funds with the building fund. We also had the unassigned in the general fund of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. We knew we had that, we knew we had to do something with it, and what we did, we got a judgment made against the school district. These funds have been taken care of by the bank who bought the judgment, will pay for that over a three-year period, it'll pay out, pay out at a certain interest rate, in three years we'll pay those monies back. Last year, we had a hundred and fourteen thousand negative. This year, we're looking at having five hundred thousand positive. That's a pretty good turnaround. It's a pretty good turnaround because it took a lot of effort, it took a lot of sweat by this administration to make sure these things happened right to get it there, because I know he sweated because he would come and tell me he was sweating. So it was, it was a major effort that was done in reducing things that we had and making sure that we got to an acceptable point where we not only had expenditures, but we were falling within dollars we had coming in. We have some additional dollars coming in now. We've had a better collection and some are already rolling. We also have a lot of this federal money that came in. Thing with federal money, it does real good, it helps do certain things, but it doesn't keep coming. And it has to be spent on certain areas. So it's not something that's just given to us free and this is what we can do. It had to be used in things that they restrict us to. When they first gave us that money, they said spend it, and then about five months later, they came back and said, oh, you can't spend it on this thing. So then we had to do some restructuring, figure out what else we're gonna do. The second round came in and said, you can spend it on this, but we have to watch what we're gonna spend it on, and then they came back and they made more restrictions. So it gets more restrictive every time you get the federal money. It's nice to have it, but it's gonna be restrictive, it's gotta go just certain items, and then it goes away. It's kind of like they have more money coming in right now. We're getting more, more money right now. You know, in the past, if you've been here very long, it goes up and it goes down. So when it goes up, don't spend everything you have, because it's gonna go down again. That was kind of a political statement I gave. Exhibit P is a income statement, it shows the revenue collections by these governmental funds that you have, the major types of expenditures. We had an excess of revenues collected over our expenditures, you say a decrease in our general fund, we had a decrease in our debt service fund. We also have a decrease in our capital projects, it's supposed to go down. You're gonna sell a bond, you're gonna get money in, and then you're gonna build whatever it is, and that money goes away. We had some other financing sources, we had some transfers in to the general fund, some of that came from activity funds, some of it came from bond fund money that we had not used and what, we're not going to use it. So we were able to move that two hundred thousand over to the general fund, which reduced that negative balance that you would have had, because we were able to move that money in from a bond fund that we were no longer needing those dollars for. We also had seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars that came into the capital projects, that was another bond fund that you sold. It's not considered revenue, it's other financing source. But overall then, we had an excess or deficiency of revenues collected over under our expenditures, a decrease of eight hundred and eighty-three thousand in general, we had a small increase in our special revenues, we did have the decrease in the debt service, and we had a decrease in the capital projects. But you add or subtract those to last year's beginning balance or the beginning balance from last year, and we ended up where our fund balance was this year. Exhibit C is a budget to actual. You can't spend all money in a budget that's centered on your appropriation. You can't, you know, it's supposed to spend more money than what you have in cash either. In this particular reason, we ran out of cash, but we had enough appropriation, we could go ahead and make these expenditures. But we had the monies that came in, you can see between the original and final budget on the general fund and on the special revenue funds, there's a difference between those funds. We had supplemental appropriation on all of this. You had to go through and have a supplement with the extra monies that had been associated to you. If you had not approved that, there would not be a change here, and then we overspent on our appropriations. So you have supplements for the special revenue, you also have a supplement that came in for the general fund. The last column then is where I just showed you on exhibit B for each one of those fund types. Page seven, bottom page number seven, I'm looking at the notes, all the bottom, all the page numbers are gonna appeal with the bottom, it's gonna go through seven through fifteen, but this year's your notes of finances. It's important that you read it. If you haven't read it, read it, but mark your spot, don't start over. It's really boring. But it tells you a lot about your district and a lot about what happens with it. Talks about the fund descriptions that you have, talks about the basis of accounting, your budget, budgetary accounting system, which I told you is on modified cash, it's under the old cash system. On page ten, bottom page number, we start with our general long-term debt. We had the two thousand and twenty bonds that we just sold for seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, they will pay out in July of two thousand and twenty-two. We also had a long-term lease through the Alfalfa County Educational Authority. It was originally for three million five hundred and seventy dollars. Those will pay out in twenty-one and twenty-two, it shows the dollars that we will pay out to have those, that lease purchase taken care of. So we had one in twenty-one, and we'll have another one twenty-two, and the last lease purchase will be taken care of. We also have a lease purchase with Farmers Exchange Bank for your athletic complex, and that will pay out in two thousand and twenty-seven. When you're selling bonds, someone's gonna wanna know if you have any other debts other than that. On page thirteen and fourteen, excuse me, on fourteen and fifteen, we talked about your employment retirement system. This is another debt you could have, would be teacher retirement. But in this particular case, it tells you that this money's held by the state of Oklahoma because we pay money in from the school to the teacher retirement, pay for that. The last column on page fourteen shows the amount of money that's been paid over the last three years by your district into teacher retirement. After the notes, we have combining statements for your special revenue and your bond fund and your capital projects. B one, A one is gonna be for the special revenue fund for your building or child nutrition. It shows the funds on hand, it shows the liabilities, and then what your restricted fund balances in each one of those funds. B one deals with the income statement for the special revenues, your building fund and your child nutrition. And you're gonna wanna say, or people wanna know, why do you have all the different lease purchases and things that you have? The reason for that is, if you look at the building fund, you see what you collected, two hundred and eight thousand dollars. You can only make capital expenditures out of bond fund money or building fund. You don't collect enough in your building fund to build anything. You barely have enough money in there to keep up your maintenance and pay payroll for a janitorial, things like that. So without doing the lease purchases you had, or the bond funds you had, you would not have these facilities. So the board came on and they made good decisions, the community backed you, and you were able to do the things that you needed to do with these bond funds and these lease purchases. It's been paid out over a period of time, but if you hadn't done those things, you would not have the facilities that you have right now. Schedule C one is a budget to actual for the building fund and child nutrition. You can see the building fund, the original and final are the same, we had no supplement within it, and on the child nutrition, we did have supplement in the child nutrition, but the actual now is where I just showed you on the schedule B one. The far side total is what shows up on exhibit. The far side total is what shows up on exhibit C under special revenues. Schedule D is your activity fund. See the number of sub-accounts you have. You have page and a half of sub-accounts. These sub-accounts all have sponsors. These sponsors have to do the same thing as your treasurer and your embezzler. They have to make sure that they receive the money when they collect it. The money is to be turned into the custodian on a daily basis so that money can be deposited on that day. Because we can't hold money more than $100. Every time you have $100 or more, you have to make a deposit. And it's not within sub-accounts. It's with the overall activity fund. So they have to be turned into that activity fund to make that deposit. We make an expenditure. The expenditure is made on approval item that the board has approved at the first year on different items. They can make these expenditures. But to make sure that they're within those items, they have to turn in a requisition to make sure that this is something that you all said they can buy. It also has to make sure that it's itemized. We have to know the amount of money that's going to go into it. We have to know if they have enough money to do this, and it's something that they're doing. Once it's approved, it's at for that requisition, they go make that purchase. Once they make that purchase, they have to turn in an itemized invoice showing what they bought. That invoice is to be signed by whoever received those goods or services. You have to train these people. You have to train them again. Then you have to remind them. And you've got watchdogs that do that. Watchdogs are not appreciated by the people they're telling they have to do, that have to do this. That will be the people back there at that table. They're telling everybody, you have to take this back, you have to do it again. You have to get it right. It's not a penalty. It's a safeguard. They don't turn that money in, they collect it in on a daily basis, and it gets stolen and is responsible. That teacher is. Parents not going to pay for it again. Students not going to put the money out again. School never got it. It's not our responsibility, so that teacher will be responsible for it. So they need to make sure these things get done properly. And the reason that's important, it goes back to $282,000. We spent $299,000. There's a lot of money that goes through an activity fund. C2 is a reconciliation statement for that activity fund. It shows we do reconcile with the depository. You had $15 in the old year that was still outstanding from 1920. That can be distilled and brought forward. If it's been out a year and it's $15 that's gone through the wash, somebody's lost it just on the way. You can bring it back and put it in the sub-accounts that came out of it. Page 16 is your schedule and expenditures of federal awards. It shows the federal programs that you have. Left-hand side shows the titles of the programs that you deal with. The last four columns then deal with the dollars that are within those programs. You can see at the first of the year, we had a total of $8,484 that had not been collected by the end of last year. Of that though, we had $10,000 we still had to spend out of the child nutrition money and receive that had not been coded correctly. We received during the year $552,000. We spent $498,000 at the end of the year. We still had money to be received from different programs. We had $14,000 coming in from Title I. We had $19,000 from IDAB. We had another round, let's say $11,000, $12,000 was from the CARES money that had come in. But we still had $79,000 that had to be spent from the child nutrition that did not get coded correctly. We spent it. Part of the problem, it's not just the school's problem, they changed the programs on us this year. Because they said, you're going to have this money, and this is going to come in here, and then they said we're going to code it to test. So if you didn't get it coded correctly, it didn't show that it was spent. But we're going to have to go back, we're going to have to do something else about that to show that these monies get spent or got expended correctly. Part of that deals with, we had money coming in that was not the usual way. The only money that we really had coming in local was from sale of foods to the teachers. Everything else is free. We still have to do those free and reduce applications because that's where the Title I money comes from. So we have to make sure people turn in the free and reduce applications. But we got all the money from sales from the federal government. We get more money from free and reduced money than we do from your local service. It's nice to get it that way, but it's going to go away too. So keep that in mind. We just got to make sure that we get things coded correctly as to what's being spent by how the money came in, came in from the program. Because we're showing coding for the state of Oklahoma, and then we got to get it correct from them as to how we can code it before we get to the end of the year because they changed things off occasionally. Pages 17 and 18 is the second letter. This one, we look at everything else. First letter dealt with your financial statements. This one, we look at everything else. We're going to look at your expenditure, we're going to look at your receipts, we're going to look at your board minutes, we're going to look at your payroll. Look at your teacher retirement. We're going to talk to people, see if they know what they're supposed to be doing. There's a lot of different things to go into what the audit consists of. We found one item that we considered to be a material weakness and two others were significant deficiencies. On page 19, we'll talk about those. The first one dealt with expenditures during testing expenditures. I noted three of the 59 activity fund purchase orders did not have an invoice. We have to have an invoice before we can make that payment. One of the 59 was dated after the invoice, shows somebody bought something before they got approval. And we have eight of the 59 did not have a signature on that invoice. We need to know who received those goods. These are items that just need to be taken care of. People need to know what they have to do when they hit these items and how they hit them and how they're supposed to go with the process. 2102, prenumbered receipts were not always utilized by activity sponsors, and receipts were not turned in the activity fund custodian on a timely basis. Monies were held, they were held for a length of time, but they shouldn't have. It's supposed to be turned in daily. If it's turned in the next day, like I was saying about, whether it's after four, five, six days, it's too long. That money's been out there too long. We also got to make sure that everybody uses receipts, not just a roster. You can use a roster, classroom roster, or do something, or you're selling suckers. You're going to sell them for a nickel. But if you're selling something for $10, $15, $20, we need receipts going out because we need a backup. Somebody comes in and says, I paid and nobody can get it. We need to make sure that they did pay it. It's all sort of departmental by the state. I'm the messenger at this point. I'm just kind of a harsh messenger. The last one dealt with a material statement. We observed during the year, during the audit, that the general fund balance significantly decreased over the past several years. We ended up with a negative balance of $114,000. This is something that prohibits the school from spending more than their approved appropriation, and also they have to maintain a positive fund balance at all times and cash balance. Proper procedures were not in place to monitor the budget appropriation and what was going to happen, and this did not happen just in last year. This was something that's gone on for a year or two, and it just kept accumulating. And when we ran out of money from our adware, because we were not collecting it, we took a big shot. And we did that for two years before we ever got to this point. And it just decreased down, and we did not have the money to take care of it. And we recommended a number of different things to the administration to be taken into consideration. And looking at what you've done now, everybody's paid attention, and that's good. That's what we want to look at when we do this. And we were able to look at this at this point in time to make sure that things have been taken care of, and it's up to you all to remember that they have to maintain that way. There's a point in time when you get a lot of money, it seems like a good thing, but it'll go away. That was kind of the lecture that time, I guess, or the statement. We had one item last year, that receipts were not turned into the activity fund custodian on a timely basis. That continued, but we need to make sure those monies get in. They don't get in, it gets extended because if something happens during the week and it doesn't get to the custodian until right at the end of Friday, it's probably not going to get deposited again until Monday, which doesn't look good. We understand that there's a timing period in there from Friday to Monday that it won't get deposited, but the monies that are not coming to them, they need to be getting to them on a timely basis. I'll go through it quickly, if there are any questions. When I started, it just kind of falls out.
All right, it was good. Appreciate it. Anybody have any questions?
It's possible to leave, it's not going to be.
Do you guys have any questions?
I appreciate it. I appreciate the time that you all put in to make sure that these things got corrected from last year. Because last year was stressful for you. I know it was stressful for Bryce. It was stressful for me. We had two that this happened with, and I had the third one through it last year. And I hadn't had to do this in 25 years, do this. It's been a long time since we had to go through this. It dates me that I can say I was doing this 25 years ago. Been 26, 1968, that's a long time.
I was in the boardman.
You weren't even born, were you? These people weren't.
No, no one else in there was.
I was. On this last one. Did you manage that responsibility as well? It was good. Yep, that was it. I'll leave one or two and all that. Nothing else? I appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
You're not even going to stick around and see if they put it in there?
Is that? Is that mine? The blank one or the?
He's got it. I have a few. I'll give you the ones.
They had no findings.
No findings. Zero. Gibson?
I'll.
Nope, I got it. He's got it right here.
Okay, thank you.
That's why you got it wrong. Already getting it away. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number five, board discussion and votes to approve or not approve that 2020-2021 financial audit is presented. Yours made a motion to approve. Desiree Second, Judy.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead, yes.
Number six, no action. Number seven. Board to consider and take action on a resolution determining the maturities of and setting a date, time, and place for the sale of 605,000 combined purpose bonds of the school district and designated bond council for the issuance of bonds. Possible dates in order of the preference are May 31st, June 1st, June 22nd, 2022. What's your thoughts, Bryce?
If we could do June 1st, after talking to Amy Davis, that would, that would work out best with him. And we do those at noon so that we can conduct this, or he can conduct the business with the bank's grand days.
Right.
But I would recommend June 1st at noon if possible to do that with a special meeting.
Any problems or questions for June 1st?
I think that's a third day, maybe.
No questions, no problems? Do I have a motion? Desiree made the motion.
Second.
Amber Second, Judy.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
That's for June 1st, 12 o'clock. Number eight, proposed executive session on discussing employment status of certified and or support personnel listed on attachment A for the school year 2022-2023, and the employment of elementary counselor, sped teacher, so that the board can return to open session, and vote to employer not to employ certified or support personnel for the school year 22-23, and an elementary counselor, sped teacher, person of 25 OS 307B1. I'll make a motion. Number second. Shane Second, Judy.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Number eight, I make a motion to return to open session. Amber Second, Judy.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Number eight, go ahead.
During the executive discussion session, we discussed the employment status of certified and or support personnel as listed on attachment A for the school year 2022-2023, and the employment of an elementary counselor, SPE, PE, teacher, so that the board could return to open session and adopt employer not as well.
Thank you. Number nine, superintendent's recommendations.
My recommendation would be to hire all certified staff and support staff listed on attachment A for the 2022-2023 school year.
Thank you. Number 10, discussion of vote to employer not to employ the employees listed on attachment A. I'll make a motion to approve. Desiree Second, Judy.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes. Number 11, discussion of vote to employer or not to employ Michael Claflin as the elementary school counselor and special education teacher for the 22-23 school year.
My recommendation would be to hire Mr. Claflin as the elementary counselor and elementary special education teacher.
Questions or concerns? Amber's made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
The second.
Shane Second, Judy.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Number 12, discussion of vote to approve or not to approve the district parent and family engagement policy.
This is part of our federal consolidated monitoring. We have had this policy in place for quite some time, but I could not find taking through everything that we've had, any adoption they listed, and we have to have that on our federal monitoring tool. So we need to approve this and show that that would be in those days. So it's kind of a technicality thing, but this is, it's through federal programs, mainly Title I, just outline the policies and procedures that we take in getting parents involved in lots of different ways, conferences, through surveys, test result communications. I'm not sure how long this is pending, but if I was in there, this is one of the avenues. Just need to get it with an adoption date.
I make a motion to approve the district parent, family.
Very per sentence. I should say fall, like the very last word on that line.
Yeah, I said, I took it from out of what? So yeah, there are certain.
Booty law.
I had to take it off of the old law.
Okay.
It's going to be up.
So updated with the corrections.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the parent, family engagement policy was updated and corrections. Do I have a second? Amber Second, right?
Yes.
Amber Second.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Number 13, superintendent's reports.
I don't have a lot to add, just a couple of updates on the legislative front. The voucher bill that was in the Senate failed and did not pass. So I think that that was a big win for public schools, keep the money, public money in public schools. And I'd just say that Senator Peterson was a very big advocate for public education, doesn't know on that matter to shut down that bill. There are a few other bills right now. They haven't had any movement, but they all deal with tax protest issues. One of them is authored by Representative Newton that would allow the assessors to talk to one another. But there's not been a lot of movement recently on those bills, but we'll be watching them closely. Hopefully, there'll be some decisions made there that will benefit us. Just starting to have conversations about some summer projects and discussing Billy And discussing with Billy and Buddy, uh, what the summer's going to look like with the summer learning program going on at elementary in June. It'll kind of change the timing of some things up, but we're starting to have those conversations. Um, we've got some smaller projects, nothing, nothing too big, but, um, just some paying projects and some other things like that. Take a look at possibly updating, um, stalls down here in the bathroom by the, by the office for, uh, in the man's room and his restroom. And we will start interviewing candidates, uh, this week for the elementary teaching position. And like I said, I'll also start, uh, looking to interview some candidates for the custodian position as well. Um, since we did not receive bids on the house that school owns across the street here, uh, on Massachusetts, uh, we have taken that next step and we will have that listed with the villager here in town. And so I expect that to happen sometime this week and they'll get that listing out. And hopefully, hopefully we can move forward on, on getting that household. Other than that, I think they've pretty well covered most of everything in the principal's reports. Just super busy. I appreciate all the students and parents and teachers and coaches and bus drivers and everybody that takes right now to do this through and in.
Yes, sir. 14, new business.
There's no new business.
15, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Desiree Second, Judy.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Go ahead, yes. Gibson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes. 7:52.